Hello and welcome. It's been another week, can't believe it. We're back. I hope you're doing well. Hope you've had a blessed week. I hope it's been filled with joy and blessings and graces, peace. And I just want to say thank you for coming back for another round. As we continue our journey in the book of Tobit. I'm excited. Today's kind of the climax of the book of Tobit. And so, which is exciting. And so, it's got some big questions to answer. And so, I look forward to answering those today. Again, I hope you're all well. Hopefully, 2020 is treating you as best as it can in the midst of the circumstances. Hope there's grace in the midst of the struggle and the storm. You know, just thinking about different things. And one thing I was reflecting on is, you know, each of us is on different stages in our journey, and different chapters in our life, different seasons. And my wife and I, I think we're kind of entering a new season. A season in which our kids, we can put them to work. So I don't know, I don't know if you all out there have reached that season in y'all's life. But I kind of like it. Like, this is good. Like, the first, I don't know, you know, six, eight years or so, you know, it's like, it's all on you, right? The feeding, the washing, the bathing, so forth and so on. And then all of a sudden, you wake up one day and you're like, okay, they can do something. So, I can tell you, my wife and I are taking full advantage of this new season. With delight, with delight. So, I think in particular, the two oldest, Dominic and Felicity, are getting to experience that opportunity of responsibility and ownership. So anyways, too funny. So, but that's exciting. It's, on our end, it is selfishly needed. And especially with the impending birth of number five coming down the pipeline, just a few months away. So, oh, that's going to be a new adventure, to be back to the sleepless nights and such. So anyways, yeah, I hope each of you are well in whatever season in your life you're in, with its blessings and challenges. And in all things, like, we lean on our God for our source of strength, our rock, our stronghold, in the midst of the storm. So let's begin with prayer and then let's dive on in. Again, today's gonna be money. Let's pray. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord God, we just turn to you as the giver of every good blessing. Every good and precious gift comes from you, Heavenly Father. We come to you this day. We just, we open our hearts and our minds to you. We yearn for you, we long for you, we want more of you, God. Send forth your spirit. Send forth your spirit. Breathe anew upon us, your Holy Spirit, God. We pray, Lord God, that that same spirit that you called Ezekiel to prophesy forth on those dry bones and call them to life. Oh, God, we are parched and thirsty in so many ways. We need you, we need your spirit. Come, Holy Spirit, breathe anew in us. Bless us in this next hour as we open your word. We pray, Lord God, that your word could come alive and speak to us, and stir our hearts, and call us to conversion. And we thank you for the witness of Tobit, Tobias, Sarah, and the invitation to journey along with them. And so, we ask all these things in your holy name, Jesus. And we ask for our Blessed Mama, for her intercession as we pray. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. So we've, so far, it's our fourth class. The first three classes, we've journeyed in Tobit chapters one through seven. And so, we'll begin with chapter eight. And so, just kind of a very quick, brief recap. A lot's happened, but essentially, we have a main character, Tobit, who's a good man, but he's in the trial, he's in the refiner's fire. And we've gotten a journey with him. And then the story's kind of shifted to his son, Tobias, who's been sent on a journey, a journey to acquire wealth. But it turns out also, a wife is a bonus. And so, we're in the midst of that journey. And he meets a woman, Sarah, who's a wonderful woman. But there's a small detail on which she's plagued by a demon who's killed the last seven husbands. And so, we left off in chapter eight. Right before we dive into chapter eight, in chapter seven, they agree to get married, having just met. And so, there's some apprehension leading into the wedding night, right, Mom? The mom's got to pat Sarah on the back and say, there, there, you got this. So anyways, oh man, what's gonna happen? Is Tobias gonna be murdered upon the marital bed? Will love conquer death? Yes. That and so much more. Let's read. Tobit, chapter eight. When they finished eating and drinking, they wanted to retire. So they took the young man and brought him into the bedroom. As he went, he remembered the words of Raphael. And he took the live ashes of incense and put the heart and liver of the fish upon them and made a smoke. When the demons, when the demon smelled the odor, he fled to remotest parts of Egypt, and the angel bound him. When the door was shut and the two were alone, Tobias got up from the bed and said, sister, get up. And let us pray and implore our Lord that he grant us mercy and safety. And they began to say, blessed are you, oh God of our fathers. Blessed be your holy and glorious name forever. Let the heavens and all your creatures bless you. You made Adam and gave him Eve his wife as a helper and support. From them the race of mankind has sprung. You said, it's not good that man should be alone. Let us make a helper for him like himself. And now, oh Lord, I am not taking this sister of mine because of lust, but with sincerity. Grant them may find mercy and may grow old together with her. And they both said, amen, amen. Then they both went to sleep for the night. Okay, so, a lot here, alright? Right away, something stands out. And that's this, okay? By Tobias being willing to marry Sarah, he's willing to lay down his life. There's a very real threat of him dying. And, obviously, it's specific to those circumstances. But I think there's something deeper that I think speaks profoundly to the call and the gift of marriage. I think part of the call to marriage, part of the gift of marriage, is the invitation to die. Right? Maybe it's not explicitly said in the marital vows, but it's there, right? On July 14, 2007, in Batman, Texas, when I said, I do to Chelsea. I'm saying, I do to laying down my life for her. Right? I'm saying, I will love you no matter what. I'll love you despite the circumstances. No matter what life throws at us, for better, for worse, from sickness and hell, richer for poor, till death do us part. Right? And so, that vow is in many ways, a vow of a willingness to lay down one's life, right? To love is to strive, to fight, to will the good of the other. Right? And which is different than just going home and loving myself. Right? And it's different than, what can I do so that I can get something out of you? Or from you? That's manipulative. Like, love is pouring oneself out, right? The greatest act of love, bar none, in all of human history, was Jesus' death on the cross, right? That was love revealed, right? And so, when we're swearing before God, before the church, before our family, to love this person till death do us part, it's a vow to death. To die, to die to oneself, which is wild, right? But there, again, I think, you know, part of the beauty of our faith is it's not just death, but it's resurrection. Which is so beautiful, right? And that's like, anyone who's been in marriage and who's been willing to die, right? Knows that it's not just death, but it's resurrection, right? And dying to Chelsea, something to myself, for the good of Chelsea, on a good day when that happens. Right? But something better happens. Our marriage is better for, like, something greater happens. And the most explicit way that happens, right? Is in the gift of children, in the gift of life, right? And so, we die to self, and then the newness of life. Which is somewhat contradictory to how I began the show by sharing how I am working my children. But still, I stand by it, right? The death and resurrection. And so, which needs to be said. Like, we live in a world that glorifies comfort, that glorifies what's easy, what's pleasurable, and all those things. And like, so much of the heart of the call to marriage is none of that. It's not, you're not swearing to feel in love. You're swearing to make an act of the will to love. And to love the other means to die to self for the good of the other, right? And that's counter-cultural. And it's different than like, the steady drumbeat that our culture's teaching us. And so, I think there's a profound witness to Tobias, which in a very, even more dramatic way, in his yes to Sarah, as a yes to like, I might literally die tonight, right? But there's something beautiful about that, right? Something so beautiful. And I just, you know, that fascinates me. Like, there's so much about, the heart of our faith is about this death and resurrection. This dying and rising. And like, part of that's just because it involves faith, like a trust. Like, I have to place it in God's hands. It's not on my own choosing, right? Because death's scary, but the hope of the resurrection, right? I'm gonna die to myself, right, in this marriage, in the hopes that in that death, something new, something far greater will come from it. You know? So anyways, ah, yes. I think part of the call to marriage is a call to death, but death and resurrection. And so, yeah, I think that kind of challenges kind of what maybe some of our understandings of marriage, especially as taught by the culture, right? Am I draw to marriage because I get something from this other person? That's, that's a problem, right? So I love that about Tobias, that witness, right? That there's a possibility that he might die, right? And so, that willingness to lay down his life. That call to sacrificial love. So, like, right off the bat, like, that speaks to me. So, what else? Well, you know, it's fascinating, like, I mean, again, if you're not familiar with the book of Tobit, like, we have a beautiful, like honeymoon suite episode in the Word of God, in the Bible, in sacred scripture. And how beautiful it is, right? And so, like, there's this idea that, like, they're alone, right? And yet, what's the first thing they do, right? Tobias, taking the lead, says, sister, get up. Let us pray and implore our Lord that he grant us mercy and safety, okay? And again, like, there's obviously the particular circumstances that make things more intense, right? With the potential demon that might slay him. But there's a depth to what happens here that's, I think, that transcends, that's connected to all, to marriage, right? And it's just several things. One, it's this idea of, like, as we begin this marriage, let's, in a sense, let's consecrate our marriage to God, right? There's something that we're doing that's risky, right? It involves death, it involves, right, it's the unknown. It's this wild new adventure, right? I have a hard time controlling myself, and like, it's just me. Now, like, somehow, the two of us are gonna become one flesh. And like, together, we've got to steer this one flesh union to salvation. Okay, we're gonna need some divine assistance. And so, I love that, right? And so, that's why, like, for us as Catholics, like, marriage is a sacrament, right? That's why, like, before we ever physically enjoin a one flesh union through the gift of sex, it's like, like, no. Like, it starts with coming before God at the altar and saying, dear God, like, this is what we're called to, this is what we're willing to commit to. But before, before we take a step further, like, send us your grace. Bless this union, like, come upon us, right? Because there's something, there's something natural, but there's something that's like, gonna call us beyond. There's something supernatural. So come, come, Lord Jesus, into this sacrament, like, we need you. And so, I love, I love that witness, right? And so, I think, yeah, it speaks to us as Catholics. Like, the fact that marriage is a sacrament, right? It's, for us, as married men and women, like, this is the means, like, the primary means by which I am now going to become a saint. Like, my path of holiness runs through me now being a husband, and then the fruit of that being a father. Like, that's gonna be my vocation, right? That's the vineyard to which I am gonna be tilling and working in. And just, ah, so to invite, to invite God into that. Let us pray, let us implore our Lord, like, amen, amen, right? So, good, right? So, again, marriage is a sacrament, okay? And we're inviting God into blessing, but also to bear witness to that, which is risky, right? We're freely, in a Catholic wedding, we're freely asking God, God, come bear witness to this. Which is a good thing, like, marriage is a good, it's a gift, it's a blessing. But like, know that you're asking God to witness to that. And so, is there a chance that God's gonna call, hold us accountable to that which we invited him to witness to? Right? And like, the words of Jesus, right, in Matthew 19, when God is therefore joined, let no man put asunder. Right? And so, like, that bears repeating, you know? Like, like, yes, like, marriage is good, yes. Like, it's a sacrament, yes, it's a blessing, but like, but it's weighty, right? We're calling God to bear witness to us, and that's a good thing, but it holds accountable, right? But there's grace, you know? And so, it's the risk, it's the challenge, it's the step into the unknown, that leap of faith, that step of courage, but there's grace. Ah, like, one thing I love talking about, which I think is, we don't necessarily realize as Catholics, is just this high view that we have of marriage and the gift of marriage, in all its aspects, especially to the gift of the sexual act, right? The, we see, you know, the marriage, you know, what the couple says with their words at the altar, they then say with their bodies through the gift of sex, you know? And like, and tying that to Jesus Christ, right? And like, you look at the one, the one Sabbathic act begun at the Last Supper, which culminates in the cross, right? What does Jesus say at the Last Supper? This is my body, right? And then, what does he say on the cross, right? This is my body, right? So good, Christ the bridegroom, us the bride, right? So same thing in our marriage, right? What we say with our words at the altar, we say with our body through the gift of sex, right? And so, like, isn't that beautiful? I mean, that's incredible, right? And so, for us as Catholics, right? The gift of sex in marriage, in love, right? Not in lust, but in love, like, is essentially a renewal of our marital vows. And like, that's amazing. Like, each time in marriage, in sex, in love, like, you're renewing your marital vows. What are you saying? I give myself completely and totally to you. And there's grace given. Like, that's amazing. Right? And I think the more we come to understand marriage, like, you see, you see just the, ah, what a shame the world, the message the world is selling about our bodies, about the gift of sex, and how low it is, how cheap, and disfigured, and marred, and lacking. And yet, the, ah, the grace and the gift of marriage is God's ordained and invited us into. So good, so good. What else? There's some subtle telltale signs, I think, of the lens by which Tobias views Sarah, right? So one of those is his reference to her as a sister, right? And so, there's like, this expression of a pure love for her, right? And there's something about that, right? In his reference to her as a sister. And then later on, right, he says to her in verse seven, right? They're offering this prayer to the Father, right? I'm taking this sister of mine, I'm not taking this sister of mine because of lust, but with sincerity, right? And so, that lens by which he's viewing her, right? And so, she's not an object to be used, right? But like, just as we would, like, a family member, we would love, right? And so, obviously, it's different, like, that's his wife, right? But there's that sincerity of love, in which he's taking her not for lust, but for love. And so, in some ways, it's almost like the threat of the demon killing him, like, helps to like, purify. Because if he was in it for lust, there's easier ways to satisfy that desire other than marrying Sarah, right? Because, because he's risking his life, right? He, there's, yeah, there's an easier, better, better way, that's your priority. And so, you know, for what reason, what is our motivation, right? Are we taking, do we see our bride as a brother and a sister? Do we see them, is the love pure, right? Or have I reduced them merely to an object to be used, right? Do you exist for my own personal pleasure, right? And what do we know about objects, right? We use them, and then when they cease to be useful to us, we discard them, right? And that's contrary to our vows, right? It's contrary to what we swear on our wedding day. And so, that call to love, right? That call to selfless, self-sacrificial love, right? And so, and so, so like, yeah. Lust, we cannot enter marriage, right, driven by lust, right? That will not sustain, that will not satisfy. And so, you know, I think it bears at least a brief comment on that we live, we live today in 2020, right? We live, we live with that, all that that means. We live in a world that's uniquely saturated in pornography, and which our lustful appetite is encouraged and fed, right? And so, in so many ways, the youth of our generation are being fed a steady appetite of porn and lust at an early age, right? And by its very nature, it's destroying our future marriages, right? The more, the more I fall into that habit of pornography, right? I'm training myself to, one, to reduce the person to an object, an object which I use and discard, right? I mean, that's the gist of lust, right? And so, if I'm, if I'm training myself over hours, over days, over years, right? To reduce the human person to merely their body, to merely an object for which I can control, for which I can use for my personal pleasure, and then discard? Like, by its very nature, I am training myself to be unfaithful to my spouse and for divorce, right? And so, that is a scourge on our generation. And we're, I think, many times, we're lying to ourselves with this, with this false idea that's like, well, yeah, but, like, when I, it'll be different because, whatever, right? And, but, I'll tell you what. The more we form a habit, right, the harder it is to break, right? And so, the fact that, especially with our phones, right? We've introduced into our bedrooms these, you know, high-definition screens in which I can have unlimited content of anything under the sign, with little to no supervision at a young age. And that's having devastating consequences, right? And so, the call is to enter marriage like that of Tobias and Sarah, right? But if we're gonna do that, like, that begins today, right? And so, like, my job is at John Paul II High School, and I'm working with my sophomores, my freshmen, my seniors, right? But one of the things I tried to express to them, and it's so hard to realize it at that age, but like, right now, the choices you're making in your life are setting your future marriage up for success or failure, right? And that's just the reality. And so, like, the choice, we're like, ah, the choices we've gotta make. And like, and for this generation, like, especially in this area, by necessity, it means that fight against the culture, right? And we, we've gotta rise, you know? And that's what's so frustrating, right? Because, oh, devil's so sneaky, right? So what does he do, right? The devil's not original. Like, in case you didn't know that, the devil's not original. Like, sin is not like, ooh, exotic and unique. No, what does he do? He takes a good, a good that God's given us, and he twists and taints and perverts it, and cheapens it, right? And so, that's what he's done, right? He's taken the good of the total gift of self in marriage, right? To the other person, like, that is good, right? But what does he do? Right? He's now made it a thing we experience without another physical human person. Like, how distorted, how screwed up, how messed up is that, right? And we come, we come to let that satisfy us, right? And I think one of the struggles with that temptation is because it's so easy, right? To be a lustful man, to be a lustful woman, like, does it require much? No, like, it's easy to be good at. Why? It requires giving in, right? Like, that's, that's it. Like, I give in, I give in to my appetites, I give in to my lustful thoughts, right? That's not hard, it doesn't require anything of me, right? But to love, that's the exact opposite, right? It requires an act of the will, it requires something from me, right? And so, in general, not just specifically with lust, but in general, like, if I mean bread, to not have a backbone, like, to not do what's challenging and hard, but to always do what's easy. And, ah, then, like, ah. Like, with what backbone do I have to work and fight in that arena of lust, right? And so, and losing that battle to lust, right? I'm sacrificing, I'm sacrificing that future marriage, right? And so, there's, oh, there's a battle waging here, right? And so, the fact that he can speak, not just as, you know, I think, like, as an ideal, but in truth and sincerity, right? I'm taking this sister of mine, not because of lust, but with sincerity. I love her, I desire her good, right? And this marriage, right, is going, it's going to succeed. It's gonna be based upon this foundation of turning to God from its very beginning. What else? Right? I love, ah, I love that prayer, okay? Like, glorifies God, right? And then, he gives this, this is a prayer, but it's, in some ways, it's a theological treatise, right? But he talks like, like, God, you're epic, right? You're amazing. And part of the reason why you're amazing, God, is because you created marriage, right? Marriage was your idea from the beginning, right? Ah, I love that, like, you know, I love Genesis 1 and 2. It's like, the depth of Genesis 1 and 2 and 3, like, just blows my mind. Like, it's so rich, it's so deep, right? And so, you have in Genesis 1 and 2, right, like, the creation of the world, like, it's good, it's good, it's good. And then all of a sudden, like, something's not good, like, what, God? Like, it's jarring, you know? What's not good? It's not good that man should be alone, right? And so, you have the creation of that which is woman. And so, you have Adam given to Eve, right? And so, it's like, the very idea of creating that which is man. And so it's like the very idea of creating that which is man and that which is woman is for the very purpose of marriage. Like so that they could come together, like, that's epic. Like, like that which is man, that which is woman, like that's God's ideas from the beginning, so we could come to, together in marriage. And like, and not just that, but like the fact that like, there's, there's something. Ah, like, like part of the beauty of marriage is there's something different about the other. Like there's something different about woman, there's something different about man, like they're not the same, right? And, and, and like, we, we, we come to understand this as, as the gift of, of mutual complementarity, right? The gift of woman, the gift of man, right? There's something beautiful, like for me as a man about woman, why? Well, there's a lot of reasons, but, but one of them is because she is mysterious. Why is she mysterious? Cause I'm a man. Like I, I kind of can somewhat understand manhood, right? Like, like, like there's something like, I'm a man, right? But woman, like, whoo, like this, that, that draws us, that, that, ah. And so like, that, that, that's the gift of marriage, it's like, like we, we're, we're different, right? And but, but, but together we compliment, we become one flesh. And so like, physically, that's, that's very true physically, like, like. Like that's scientifically true, but it's deeper than that, right? And that, and, and part of the gift of marriage is that complementarity, right? The complementarity between man and woman, the two becoming one flesh, that, 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 that gift of self to the other. And that, that, what, what, what then comes together, that one of flesh. And so just that, that idea like, God, you're amazing. Why? Cause marriage is your idea from the beginning, right? Like, like how beautiful, like you, you, like, you gave Adam Eve, like what an epic gift. Like before this, like Adam had it all, like he had, he was living in the ultimate bachelor path. Like, 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 he, he, he was hanging with the, with the, the rhinoceroses. He's wallowing with the hippos, like he's living at large, right? He could go to bed anytime he wanted to, he could, didn't have to clean his room, right? But it was not good, right? And then God creates Eve, right? And he awakes from his sleep and he sees her. And you have the first poetry in scripture, uh, the, the first potential song, the first ballad, right? Something stirred within Adam, he's woke, right? His response, he busts out in song and he says. This at last is bone of my bone, flesh of my flesh. She shall be called woman, cause she was taken from man, right? Maybe not quite like that, right? But you get the idea, like, ah, he stirred, like there's something good about Eve, right? Ah, something beautiful for her, right? And so I, I love it, cause like, like, like from the dawn of creation, like you created man and woman, you've invited them to be, to become one flesh. Right? And so Tobias is saying, and it's for that same reason that I'm taking Sarah, right? Because it's good, cause it was your idea. And so I, uh, we don't have time to get into that today, but like I, I, I love it in, in Matthew chapter nineteen. The, the Pharisees come at Jesus, there's, like, there, there's some rascally plots in the gospels. In which the Pharisees and other Jewish religious leaders, I mean, they play in some evil plots to, to ensnare Jesus. And Matthew nineteen is one of their best, okay? And, and, and so twice they, they, they set this deadly trap, okay? And then, oh, they think, they, they're licking their chops, they think of God, doesn't matter what he says, like he, he can't get out of it. And, and, and again, I guess we're still going into it, but we don't have time to fully go into it. But, but the thing I wanna highlight is that in Jesus' responses, there's two traps regarding marriage. And in both those traps, Jesus' response, he says, from the beginning, it was not so. Right? And so for us as Catholics, like marriage is under attack today in so many different ways, right? But I think part of the key to like, like, why should we care? Why, why is marriage a big deal? Why is it important? Cause it's God's idea from the beginning, right? And then so you, obviously you had that alluded to here with Tobias, but like Jesus straight up says it, not once, but twice. Right? And when she is a deadly trap, there's life on the line, right? And so that, that, that's deep, that's profound, right? And so we, you know, we see marriage under attack today. And like, like, what's our response? So like, and obviously there's, there's so much to be said, right? But, but what is the fundamental building block of any human civilization? It's marriage and the family. And so if marriage is destroyed and the family is destroyed, how can the civilization not end up destroyed, right? And so that's, that's what's at stake today, right? We, we're, we're having the, the, the destruction from not just one attack or two, like from, from every angle, we're having. The destruction of marriage and the family, right? And, and, and that, and that's a destruction that's without, that, that's not without its consequences, you know? And I guess one more point, I know we gotta move on, but like, I'm slightly passionate about this topic, but, but here's the other thing, right? Marriage is a reflection, an icon, if you will, of the Trinity, right? The Father loves the Son, the Son loves the Father. And that love is so real and dynamic and intimate that that's the Holy Spirit, right? The love of the Father and Son, okay? And so, so marriage, like what is marriage? It's very similar, right? The husband loves the wife, the wife loves the husband, and what happens? A lot of times nine months later, you gotta give that love a name. It's, it's incarnated, right? And so you got a little Dominic running around out there and a Felicity and a Sophia and an Emma, right? And a baby, another baby girl on the way, number five, right? But like how epic, right? Our kids are like a incarnated, a, 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 you know, a, a, a fleshed out. Walking incarnation of our love, like that's, that's beautiful, right? And then, and that's an icon of the Trinity. And so no wonder why marriage is under attack today, right? Because it's an attack, I, I think at the heart of God, cause our God is a, a God of love, right? And where, where, where do we learn to love and to be loved, right? Like we, 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 like to, 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 to be known and to be loved, like it's in marriage and the family, right? Let's move on. Alright, uh, so we're halfway through verse nine. So what's gonna happen, dun, dun, dun? The demon goes, but like, but like again, like you're, you're. You're a little concerned as you, as you fall to sleep for the night, right? Um, and, but yeah, I think there's that, that, that peace, that surrender, like it's in God's hands, right? Uh, almost that idea that love can conquer death. Uh, there's that, that beautiful passage from Song of Songs, which, which was cool, cause like, a lot of times this, this passage from Tobit chapter eight. Is read on wedding days and it, another passage that's read on our, on our, on our weddings is from Song of Songs. And there, there, there's some, some beautiful parallels, um, with that, especially with that idea of a, a love that's stronger than death. This is from Song of Songs, chapter eight. Set me as a seal upon your heart, as a seal upon your arm, for love is as strong as death. Jealousy is cruel as the grave, it's, it's flashes are flashes of fire and most vehement flame. Many waters cannot quench love, neither can floods drown it. If a man offered for love all the wealth of his house, it would be utterly scorned. It's the idea of a love that's stronger than death. Yet the ultimate love Christ on the cross, which indeed conquered a death. So anyway, so a peace, right? A, a, a peace of, of surrender to God, right? A, a purity of heart with which they've entered it. So what happens, so, uh, continuing on. But Ragwell arose and went and dug a grave with the thought, perhaps he too will die. And so again, here's, here's some, uh, some humor. Dad of Sarah, right, uh, Tobias' new father-in-law is nervous, right? He's, he's seen this play out before, right? So he's like, hmm, he's a visitor, maybe people don't even know she's getting married. We can just bury in the backyard, don't tell anyone and, uh, no one will know. Oh, sneaky, sneaky. Alright. So, uh, verse eleven, then Ragwell went into the house and said to his wife Edna. Send one of the maids to see whether he's alive, and if he's not, let us bury him without anyone knowing it. So the maid opened the door and went in, alright? Now, who knows, but like, if, if you remember, right, earlier in verse two, he takes the ashes, uh, and, and he, uh. He puts the, uh, the liver, um, the heart and the liver on it, okay? And so I don't know about you, but like that probably smelled awful, right? Like rotten fish, old fish smells bad, and then you put it out in some coals and you just have some, some roasted, rotted fish. So you can ima- imagine the maid, right? She opens the door and she's like, whoa, he's decaying quickly. But instead, uh, she, she finds out that they were both asleep. She came out and told them that he was alive. And so verse fifteen, then Ragwell blessed God and said, blessed are you, oh God, with every pure and holy blessing. Let your saints and all your creatures bless you, let all your angels and your chosen people bless you forever. Blessed are you, cause you've made me glad, it has not happened to me as I expected, but you've treated us according to your great mercy. Blessed are you, cause you've had compassion on two only children. Show them mercy, oh Lord, and bring their lives to fulfillment and health and happiness and mercy. And then he ordered his servants to fill in the grave. Alright, so, ah, of course, a, a beautiful prayer by Ragwell, like, like as a father, right? Like the love that he has for his daughter, right? He desires her best, you know, and like, oh, it breaks his heart, like. The journey of the, however long that's been, you know, and then like the unexpected happens, the impossible happens. And so just like that, ah, the, the sweet joy that he experiences in like, and then the fact that like, like. He gives, he gives all, all credit, all praise, all glory to God. And so, uh, and then he orders the grave to be filled. So you just imagine the next day, right, they come down for breakfast, right? And Tobias is sipping his coffee and he, he looks outside and he's like, wait a minute there. Were you, were you gardening last night? Like, there's a, I see a fresh, freshly, uh, turned over, uh. Plot in the backyard and, uh, it's about my size. Hey, wait, hey, wait a minute. What, let's, let's read on, verse nineteen. Um, after this, he gave a wedding feast for them, which lasted fourteen days. Before the days of the feast were over, Ragwell declared by oath to Tobias, we should not leave until the fourteenth days of the wedding feast were ended. Then, that then he should take half of Ragwell's property and return in safety to his father, that the rest would. And that the rest would be his when my wife and I die, okay? Um, again, possibly funny, right? But he, he, he wait, he waits for the public celebrations to, until they pass the trial of death. By demon, um, so that's kinda funny. Uh, but then there's something I love about verse nineteen, right? They have a fourteen day wedding feast. Um, and I love that because, like, and, and, and we, we, we still kind of. Have some of its leftovers and yet it's, it's getting quickly lost, but like, like to me, the thing that speaks to me was like. Like when else do you have a fourteen day feast? Like what else in your life do you have a fourteen day feast for? I mean, I don't know, like a promotion, um, a good harvest, um. Your son's T-ball game, like, like there's some, the point I'm making is there's something unique about marriage. Like it's something worth having a fourteen day feast for, right? It's not something that you, it's like, you like, hmm, stumble, like, hmm, like, like it's a covenant. Like it's, it's, it's like, it's this, 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 this oath that you swear before, before family, family, friends, God, right? The, the, the church, right? It, it means something, right? And so it's, it's something worth celebrating, right? The two have become one flesh, they're entering this new adventure and journey together. Um, and so like e- even today, like, I, I, I think we, 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 we still have it-ish, right? But like, 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 we still can't help but like, still think it's a big deal, right? We send out, save the date cards, which basically say, hey, we're getting married. And this is just a, a pre-invitation, but we're gonna give you another invitation which is nicer. And then we, and then we send out the actual invitation, right? And then we have, we have like a whole adventure of saying yes to the dress, right? It's like, oh, who do we invite? It's the mom, the mother-in-law, sisters, bridesmaids, and like we go and like it's, it's a sort of deal, and like, oh my goodness. And then we post pictures about it, and then there's the wedding venue, and then there's the flowers, and then there's the cake testing and like all these things. And of course, like, there's a way in which it's become materialistic and showy and blah, 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 whatever, right? But like, I, I still think that like there's, there's a dynamic to all that, that's, that's, it's, we're still trying to say, I don't even know if we, we fully realize this, but like. There's something special, there's a big deal about this, right? Um, and so, but yeah, we're losing that, right? Cause we're, we're, we're stripping marriage of its definition, right? Um, is, is it forever? Well, actually, like in reality, it's just as long as I feel in love with you. And is it, is it for the purpose of creating a family? Well, no, actually. They're, they're gonna get in the way of us and our, our, our plans and our future. And so we're gonna have a sterile, on purpose, sterile marriage. Like, like what is this? Like, like we both wanna publicly say that we have feelings for each other for the moment and that we will remain in these feelings. For as long as we wanna be in these feelings and, but we might one day not have these feelings and then we, and then that's. Is what it is, right? So I think. Again, part of the way in which our culture has attacked marriage and which is being, it's, 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 it's very definitions being, it's being destroyed, like. Like, we're like, what, what, like, and you, you'll notice, like, like, like we, we still like to show you weddings, but like, it's cause it's almost like, it's a show. But like, sometimes we don't even have the wedding because it's, it's like, man, it's, it's like, well, whatever. And like, or like you, you have like all, all these relationships in which they've lived together for five years and like, eh, we'll have a public wedding now, like. Like we, we're losing our, our understanding of marriage. And so it's a small thing, but like it reminds me like that, like, it's, it's a good thing, it's a blessing, but it means something, right? It's a fourteen day feast, right? I wouldn't mind bringing that back, right? You know, but like, I think, yeah, there's something, I, I, I don't know, if you've been to a, 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 a beautiful wedding, there's something beautiful about a, a wedding. In which the, in which the, the, the bridegroom and bride are Tobias and Sarah type character, in which they're, they, in which they mean what they're, they, they know what they're saying. They mean it, in which they're taking each other for a noble purpose, right? And like, that's worth celebrating, you know? Um, and, and, and so, but like, yeah, hmm, I think I've probably talked enough on it. I think, I think you get the idea, but I, I love that image of a fourteen day wedding, cause it means something, right? And yet we're, 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 we're robbing marriage of any meaning whatsoever. Alright, let's read on, chapter nine. Then Tobias called Raphael and said to him, brother Azariah, take a servant and two camels with you. And go to Gabiel at Rages and Media and get the money for me and bring him to the wedding feast. For Ragwell has sworn that I should not leave, my father's counting the days, if I delay long, he'll be greatly distressed. So Raphael made the journey and stayed overnight with Gabiel. He gave him the receipts and Gabiel brought out the money bags with their seals intact and gave them to him. In the morning they got up early and came to the wedding feast, Gabiel blessed Tobias and his wife. Okay, so, uh, now, uh, the original, the original mission, uh, for which he's on, he succeeds, right? And acquiring that money from, uh, this, that is stored there. Um, but, but I, I love that one line there, right? Um, Tobias is concerned for the father, right? I mean, like how, how quickly things have changed, right? He, he's, he's now married, he's married to a wonderful woman with great in-laws, who, his father-in-law might have thought he died, right? But, but yeah, he's got, he's got great in-laws and he's got this, he's got this new woman. And, and yet, like in the midst of this all, like Tobias still has a heart for the father, right? And he, and he knows, like dad's blind at home and like he, and he, he sent me on this journey. And like for every day I delay, like it's gonna worry my dad, it's gonna worry my mom. And like, like, and so like this obviously is good, but like, but, but he, but I have a heart for the father. And, and, and so I, I, I love that, right? The, um, so how, how easy it can be to get caught up in whatever's going on in life? And be like, oh, oh, yeah, hmm, yeah, I for, I forgot about that, my bad, right? And, and so I, I, I love that, like even in the midst of the wedding feast, even in the midst of this, this new life and this joy and this grace and the blessings, right? He still remembers what brought him here, right? And then, and then, and then his, his father sent him on this journey and, and, and then, that, that, that's the father's heart, like, ah, longs for his return to mother. Right? And so like, that's a priority to him. Right? And so like, that's a priority to him. And so, I like that. Alright, reading on, chapter ten. Now his father Tobit was counting each day, and when the days for the journey had expired and they did not arrive, he said, is it possible he's been detained? Or is it possible that Gabiel died and that there's no one to give him the money? And he, he was greatly distressed and his wife said to him, the lad has perished. His long days proves it. She began to mourn for him and said, am I not distressed, my child, I let you go and you who are the light of my eyes? But Tobit said to her, be still and stop worrying, he's well. And she answered him, be still and stop deceiving me, my child has perished. She went out every day to the road by which they'd left. She ate nothing in the daytime, throughout the night, she never stopped mourning for her son Tobias. Till the fourteen days of the wedding feast expired, which Ragwell had sworn that he should spend there. And so, uh, again, a, a third episode in a very heartfelt interaction between, um, Tobit and, uh, Tobit and his wife. Uh, Anna, um, and I, ah, like, you, like, you, you feel for both of them and like, you, you can relate to that, that dynamic and that, that, that struggle and that, and that that strife and that, that, the trust in the Lord, but the, the concern and that fear, that stress. I, I, I love that image of her, right? Um, in some ways, I think it's i- iconic of, of mothers, right? Mother's hearts, like, ha- like, they had that s- that special love for their children, right? And so, like, ah, there's something about a mother's heart. Again, like talking about mystery, like, that's another mystery, right? The, oh, the, the wild gift of a mother's heart, like, and the way that a mother loves her child, right? And so, just that image of her, like, eating nothing, right? Um, and, uh, she went out every day by the road by which they'd left. And and so, just that, ah, I can't help but picture that image of the, the father and the story of the prodigal son, right? When the, when the son was yet a long ways off, the father runs, right? And so, the, ah, a mother's heart who breaks for her son. You know, it's, it's, it's interesting, right? In a unique way, so often, I, a mother's children, like, their, their bumps, their bruises, their scrapes, their pain, their, the, the, the suffering, like, so many times, that, like, the mother's heart, like, it's, like, it's every bit hurts. A- and and the, the special way that, ah, a mother loves her children, like, ah, something just so deep and profound about that. Um, and so that just, ah, that, that, that image, that image speaks to me, right? Um, her, 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 ah, her, her yearning, her, yeah, her concern, her yearn, her love for her son. You know, and like, ah, like the, the, the beauty of our, of our, our blessed mother for, for her heart, right? How much did she, I mean, like, I, I can't even imagine, like, how much did she love her son, right? I mean, I, I, I'm at times a wicked and evil son and, and gosh darn it, my mom loves me, right? My mom loves me fiercely, right? And yet our blessed mother, whose son was Jesus Christ, oh, how fiercely did she love him, right? Ah, he who was the, the incarnate son of the father, right? And then, and then, you know, he who knew, 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 knew no sin to take on sin, right? To, to take upon himself the sins of the world, right? To, to, uh, to experience the cross and crucifixion, right? And even after he's dead, right? His sides pierced and the blood and water poured forth, you know? And so in so many ways, right, that, that's, whose heart was pierced to cover it, it was our lady's heart, it was the mother's heart, right? Like, like, who, who, who loved her son, like, in, in a, ah, such a, yeah, a, a way that only our lady, who's perfect, like, in her perfect, yes, can, like, can love, can love the son, like, you know, and like, so, yeah, wow, wow, right? Um, and so, 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 so beautiful, I, I think there's such a deep mystery that, 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 that us as children of mothers can learn from a mother's love, right? That, that, the, the, um, yeah, like, like, when, 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 you know, is, 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 when, when you, when you have a child, right? Uh, you know, the, 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 the mother's basically like, signing up to, to like, take upon, like, there's the suffering and trials and wounds of each of her children, like, her, her, like a mother's suffering, like, with each child, like, like exponentially grows. Like, again, like that, but that death and resurrection, right? A mother loves their children, right, cause she, she yearns, like, she wants what's best for them, right? She desires their good, like, she wants them to be saints, she, she wants, she wants them to experience the joy and peace of the beatific vision. Alright, reading on. At that time, Tobias said to Ragwell, send me back for my father and my mother have given up hope of ever seeing me again. But his father-in-law said to him, stay with me and I will send messengers to your father and they will inform him how things are with you. Tobias replied, no, send me back to my father. So Ragwell arose and gave him his wife Sarah and half of his property and slaves, cattle and money. When he blessed them, he sent them away, saying, the God of heaven will prosper you, my children, before I die. He said also to his daughter, honor your father-in-law and your mother-in-law, they are now your parents. Let me hear a good report of you. And he kissed her. And Edna, and Edna said to Tobias, the Lord of heaven bring you back safely, dear brother. Grant me to see your children by my daughter Sarah, and may rejoice before the Lord. See, I'm entrusting my daughter to you, do nothing to grieve her. So, so beautiful, right? I, the book of Tobit's amazing, like, what beautiful images of marriage. And not just like one, the multiple, right? From Tobit and Anna to Tobias and Sarah to Ragwell and Edna, right? And they're, 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 they're imperfect, they're human, they're flawed, but like, they, ah, they, they speak to the gift of, of marriage and, and, oh, I love it. So, couple things here, what stands out? Something we already talked about, right? What, here you have a father and a mother blessing their children, right? And so that idea, like, to all of us that are, that are, um, fathers, all of us that are mothers, like, do we bless our children? Right? Do our children know that we bless them, that we call on the Lord's blessing upon them? Do, do we desire their good, right? And so it's beautiful, right? The God of heaven will prosper you, right? Hmm, my children, um, right? Says, says Ragwell and then Edna says, the Lord of heaven bring you back, right? That, that, that fatherly and motherly blessing, um, so good, so good. Uh, what else? Um, I, I, again, Tobias insistence on, on returning home, right? The, the, the remembering like that, the mission on which he's, he's sent, um, the, uh, I love, I love Edna, I love Edna's blessing, right? The, um, part, part of that blessing is what? Right? The Lord of heaven bring you back safely, dear brother, and grant me to see your children, right? What a great mother-in-law, I wanna see babies, right? But like, children are a gift and a blessing. Like, that, that, that should say something about the spiritual health of our culture when we see like, the, one of the great gifts of life, children, the opportunity to become co-creators with God. And somehow, children have, have become an evil, right? They're a curse, they're a price tag, right? They get in the way of our career, they're gonna get in the way of our love, they're going to, yeah, yeah, and so we, we purposely sterilize ourselves, right? We cut off our shoots, the natural blossoms of our tree, alright? We, 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 we become conditioned to see them as evil, right? A- and like that, that, what a lie, right? And so, uh, they're a gift, they're a blessing, they're a god. And so I love, ah, I love it, right? Uh, and, 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 and it reminds them that, and we need that reminder, right? Uh, the gift of children, uh, like, we, a soul's eternal, right? And so, this beautiful gift of marriage, the opportunity to bring a new human life, whose soul's gonna exist for eternity. And in a small way to, to, to be invited to participate in that, like that, how is that bad? How's that an evil? Ah, how far have we fallen, right? So anyways, I love that, I love that reminder, right? Mother-in-law says, I want grandchildren, right? Ah, that gift, that gift, that gift. I'm entrusting my daughter to you, do nothing to grieve her, right? And so, like, again, we talked earlier about, uh, about, uh, Anna's heart, right? But in here we see, uh, here we see, uh, Edna's heart, right? And so she's, she's having to say goodbye to her daughter, her daughter's no longer her daughter in the same way, right? And, and so it's, like, she's entrusting, she's entrusting her, um, to, to, uh, to Tobias. And like, again, by all accounts Tobias is, is a good man, but like, as a mother, like, to, 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 to offer that up and to place that, like, and that's risky and it's, it's, ah, and so like, ah, and so like that, like, she's like, I got my eye on you. Right? I'm entrusting my daughter to you, right? Do nothing to grieve her, okay? Uh, and so I, I like that, oh, oh, what, what a good mother-in-law. Uh, here too, like, again, I, I, I feel, I feel ridiculously blessed, the, uh, that, yeah. I, I, I too have a, a mother-in-law that, uh, that inspires me to, to love my wife all the more. Alright, we are out of time, so we're gonna pause here. Um, let's close with prayer, in the name of the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Ah, dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the beautiful book of Tobit and the opportunity today to reflect on the gift, the call that is marriage. Um, and, and in many ways in which it's, it's, it's under attack today and yet the reminder of its gift and its blessing and that it's, it's your idea from the beginning. And we thank you for, for the gift of marriage, we thank you, Lord God, um, for, for our marriage, we thank you for the marriages of our, our parents and grandparents, the marriages that we're in, and we just, we lift them up to you and we're, whatever spiritual state that they're in, whatever, whatever crosses that they're undergoing and whatever's going on, I just, we, we pray for a renewal of our marriages, uh, so that they could more perfectly imitate the Blessed Trinity. They could bless, they could imitate your, your divine life, that, that outpouring of love. We pray to Lord God that our marriages could be, could be faithful. We pray that our marriages could be, um, could be an opportunity to die and to rise. We pray that our marriages could be life-giving. Um, and we pray, Lord God, that, that in our marriages, it could be an opportunity to call our culture back to you. Um, we pray that it could be an opportunity to bear witness to love. We pray that we could love more fiercely our spouses, we could love more fiercely our children. Um, for, um, that we could, we could love in sincerity, not in lust, but in complete, in total sacrificial, unconditional love. We ask these things in your heavenly and holy name, that are session of our blessed mama, as we pray. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. In the name of the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. God bless, please be sure to share the video, spread the word. Thanks for joining in and, uh, look forward to next week, the journey home, to be continued.